Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderman Iggracia. Alderman Carter. Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderman Switzer.
Present.
Alderman Howard.
Present.
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Bacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Cone.
Present.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Grass.
So Josh.
Present.
Thank you. President Ballmer. Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Iggracia. Alderman Carter. Alderman Peel.
Here.
Alderman Todd. President Ballmer.
Present.
Twenty present, you have corn.
Corn being present will be led in prayer today by Pastor John Watson from Maple Temple Church. Pastor, take us away.
God bless you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. We thank God for you, and we want to start out by quoting from the Holy Scriptures. "There is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the world and all who dwell therein." Gracious God, heavenly Father, thanksgiving and gratitude fill our hearts as we thank you for the mercies that are renewed daily. As we begin another assembly to delegate and deliberate on how to best serve the citizens of this great city, we're reminded that you are the divine architect of the world and the people in it. Even with you allowing us free will and freedom of decision making, on today, give us insight on how to bring our ideas and collaborations together that will reflect your divine design for our community. A place of safety in the community that will serve and benefit each citizen equally and justly. Into your arms we commit ourselves, our family, our community. Amen.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your time. Thank you for your thoughts. All right, so we'll dispense with slide item three. Introduction of Honor Guest. Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized.
As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my special guest.
All right, Greg, welcome. Thank you very much. Saw your sign yesterday. Thank you. Anyone else have any other guests? Anyone else? Alderman twenty-fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today is July thirteenth. It's National French Friday. I encourage everyone to head up to Crown Candy Kitchen and have their imaginary french fries up there. I believe they call them chips, and enjoy the day.
Thank you, sir. All right. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minute stated Friday, July eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Alderman twenty-fifth, you're recognized for approval of the minutes.
I thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, July eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Entertained a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from the Alderman twenty-fifth, second by the Alderman from the fifth, that we approve the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of your agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
All right, we'll dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off any of the informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off any of our informal calendars? All right. We will go to first reading of board bills.
Board Bill seventy-two sponsored by Alderman Iggracia and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing the City of St. Louis Department of Health to enter into a memo of agreement with the Missouri Department of Health to your services for $10,000 through September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two to work with for the bill and completing an active transportation plan in the bill and the greater bill neighborhoods, authorizing the expenditures of funds by entering to contracts otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
You enjoyed that, I'm sure. All right, reference to committee.
To the Health and Human Services Committee Board Bill seventy-two. That's the extent of reference to committee.
All right, second reading reporter standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of public safety with the DuPont's recommendation. Board Bill thirty-seven sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Tyus, and Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement accepting phase four provider relief funding and authorizing the fire commissioner on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and to contract to expand such funds and contain an emergency clause. War Bill thirty-eight sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, Alderman Clark Hubbard, and Alderman Tyus, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing the fire commissioner on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and to contract to expand such funds and contain an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of HUD with the DuPont's recommendation. Board Bill fifty-two sponsored by Alderman Cone, Alderman Spencer, and Alderman Gunther, and ordinance pertaining to special use districts establishing the Dutch Town Special Use District, providing definitions and findings pertaining to said Dutch SUD, further providing use and conditional use regulations for said for said Dutch Town SUD and containing an emergency and a severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of transportation with a DuPont's transportation and commerce with a DuPont's recommendation. Board Bill fifty-seven sponsored by Alderman Cone, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing and directing the director of airports and the comptroller of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute a service agreement between the City and Exxon Enterprises, Inc. for integrated conduct, energy weapon, and body camera equipment services and contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill sixty-seven sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook, and ordinance amending ordinance number six-seven-four-zero-three relating to a lease agreement dated April second, two thousand and seven, to be extended in the second mutual option between the City of St. Louis and Great Rivers Greenway District, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to lease agreement between the City of St. Louis and the Great Rivers Greenway District for a period of five years with one more five-year mutual mutual option for land rights in the near north riverfront neighborhood and annual rate, I'm sorry, at annual rents and set forth in First Amendment attached as exhibit A and containing the severability clause. That's the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
All right, thank you, Sharita. Alderman from the twelve, you have your hand up. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. And I might be slightly delayed in this, but I wanted to make a motion to pull Board Bill number sixty-two, which has been assigned to Streets Committee, but due to extenuating circumstances, being able to host a meeting, a hearing, out of committee.
What we're sixty-two at now currently?
It is currently assigned to the Streets Committee, and again, I want to reiterate that there's been extenuating circumstances on the chairwoman's part.
And you want this assigned to a new committee is what you're asking, or?
Well, I was wanting to make a motion that we pull it out of committee, which I believe would be a two-thirds vote by the board.
So you're wanting to suspend the rules to move this out of committee?
I don't know that we can do that. It is now, you know, seeing as we have only today's meeting and Friday's meeting, we're not holding any meetings over the summer.
Is there any emergency to this to have this done at this point?
Is there? Well, it is on behalf of the advocacy of my constituents who have been wholly patient during the restructuring process between Streets and the Board of Aldermen, and to try to do my due diligence to them having, what was them having done their part as required by me, I'm now trying to do my part as required by my office. I will defer to you, Mr. President, on how you.
Well, you know, trying to pull it out today because it hasn't come out of committee. It was just introduced, I believe I'm trying to go through my notes on June.
June twenty-fourth, Mr. President.
Yeah, so I don't know that I've, in my time down here, I've seen bills take much longer than that to get out of committee. I don't know that there's any rush because of, again, we are going down for summer break Friday.
Yes.
And there'll be no committee hearings or any hearings of any sort before we come back in September.
Yes, so you understand my urgency, Mr. President.
Well, I, at this point, I would, I have other hands up. My first inclination is to decline your, 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 your motion. We can put it to vote, but I also have the chairwoman from Streets has her hands up, so at this point, if you will allow me, I will call the chairwoman from Streets, Alderman from the first, you're recognized. Please unmute, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Your board bill has to be in committee for thirty days, which it has not. So if it was an urgency, I want to say to a first term alderperson, get your board bills introduced early enough. When you do not introduce them early enough, it is the chair's prerogative. Now, I did not intend for that to be my prerogative because I went to the hospital, but I find it very insulting that you would then try to take my illness and use it, and I am opposed to it. And I would ask everybody, if we put this to a vote, to vote against it because pretty much people know I move their board bills pretty fast. If you ask me, I get them right through, but I cannot help if I went to the hospital for five days, and I really find this insulting and selfish.
Alderman, thank you very much, and pardon my, I'm going through my things you're talking, but yes, you're, there is it being introduced on June twenty-fourth is being July thirteenth. You know, I find your motion out of order, sir.
I understand. I just withdraw, and I, as a point of personal privilege, would like to apologize to the Alderman of the first. Alderman, I did try to contact you, and again, it's a hectic time, so I apologize that we were unable to communicate. This is merely my attempt to, to serve the public, the twelfth ward, and to hold at my end of the, of the process. So my apologies for the offense, Alderman, and my apologies for delaying the meeting further, Mr. President. With that, I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman from the twenty-third, you are recognized.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. I'm going to actually suspend both, but I gotta do one at a time. So I'd like to take a motion to suspend Board Bill thirty-seven and move it to the perfection consent calendar. Just as an FYI, we passed these last year. Apparently, we didn't go to E and A first, so these are, both have to do with grants that if we don't get them, we're going to lose them, and the fire department definitely needs them, so.
Okay, so you're making a motion, we suspend the rules.
Right, to, to.
Thirty-seven.
To the perfection consent calendar.
Entertained a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-third and second by the Alderman from the eighth. Before proceed with the vote, I have a hand up. Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually was hoping to suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill fifty-seven also. So can we remove that motion and do them together instead of having two separate votes? I believe in the past, we've been able to do that.
Can we do, can we do?
One second, please, one second. There's no discussion on the floor, please. Thank you very much. We can do, we have before a motion to suspend the rules for three bills. Thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and your bill, Alderman Cone, was.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. So, and we, these are all going to perfection consent, correct?
Correct.
All right, so the motion before us is to suspend the rules for Board Bill thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and fifty-seven to be put on the profession consent. I'll entertain a second for all three of those.
Second.
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 Okay, we have a second from the fourteenth. I don't believe Alderman Cone, you can second your own motion, so.
Well, it's technically the Alderman from the twenty-third's motion.
Well, you're involved, sir. It's like the eggs and bacon. All right, so Sharita, please call, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, aye. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Carter. Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Carter. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Twenty-three ayes votes.
By your vote, you have suspended the rules and adopted the motion of the Alderman from the twenty-third and the Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Sharita, please place Board Bill thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and fifty-seven at the end of perfection consent.
So noted.
All right, we will proceed. Our line item fifteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill sixty-nine sponsored by Alderman Iggracia, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing the City of St. Louis Department of Health to enter into a cost reimbursement subaward agreement with, with St. Louis County, Missouri for up to $106,731.75 through August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, for the same amount of $106,731.75 for two additional, two terms, $320,195.25 over three years, enabling a DOH to hire two community health workers, authorizing the expenditure of grant funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill fifty-six, committee sub-sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement, wherein the Board of Aldermen authorizes the receipt of and appropriates funds under a sub-grantee agreement between the City of St. Louis and the State of Missouri Department of Economic Development and the Missouri Housing Development Commission, funds by the federal grant under the Consolidated Appropriations Act 2021 Public Law 116-260, Section 501, to establish the Emergency Rental Assistance Program for emergency rental and housing assistance payments by local governments and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill thirty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Tyus, and Alderman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement accepting phase four of, phase four provider relief funding and authorizing the fire commissioner on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and to contract to expand such funds and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill thirty-eight sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, Alderman Clark Hubbard, and Alderman Tyus, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing the fire commissioner on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and to contract to expand such funds and contain, contained an emergency clause. Board Bill fifty-seven sponsored by Alderman Cone, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing and directing the director of airports and the comptroller of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute a service agreement between the City and Exxon Enterprises, Inc. for integrated conduct, energy weapon, and body camera equipment services and contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Thank you, Sharita. Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized for approval of the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have, I didn't catch the second.
First ward.
Okay, first ward, thank you very much. Good to see you all room. It's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth and second by the Alderman from the first, that we approve our perfection consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. By your vote, you have sustained the motion, the Alderman twenty-fifth, and adopted perfection consent calendar. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill forty-seven, committee sub-amended sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Orion, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Cone, Alderman Davis, Alderman Iggracia, Alderman Todd, Alderman Page, Alderman Rice, Alderman Peel, Alderman Middlebrook, and Alderman Gunther. The proposed bill provides for an independent investigation of law enforcement misconduct and use of force incidents. The bill repeals for ordinance number six-nine-nine-eight-four as amended by ordinance number seven-zero-five-three-two, and it acts in lieu thereof an ordinance that reconstitutes and provides staff support for the civilian oversight board and provides coordination and staff support for the detention facility oversight board created under ordinance seven-one-four-three-zero. The bill also establishes the division of civilian oversight within the Department of Public Safety and authorizes the establishment of the Public Integrity Unit directed by the Circuit Attorney in the City of St. Louis.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you're recognized on perfection of Board Bill forty-seven, committee substitute as amended.
Thank you, President Ballmer and members of the board. I would like to move to perfect Board Bill forty-seven, committee sub-amended.
Entertained a second?
Second.
All right, I believe it's moved by the Alderman from the twenty-sixth, I believe second by the Alderman from the fourth, is the voice I heard first. With that, we will proceed. Please. Alderman, your, your floor.
Sure, thank you, Alderman Ballmer. We have had several committee hearings on this, so I don't have to belabor what this bill is about and the work that's going into this, the collective cooperation that has gone into this. I would like to speak like yesterday, I spent time going back on the history of this bill. I went back and watched all the committee hearing, all the hearings on the floor when it was passed in two thousand and fifteen under Antonio French and in two thousand and eighteen under Alderman Boyd. I went back and listened to the comments, you know, the things that people said, the encouragement that people gave back then, some of it still stands today. You know, this work started, what, twenty-some years ago, under the leadership of our Alderman, of our clerk now Terry. And so when I went back and listened to them, they knew then that this work was going to continue to evolve. They knew then that it was gonna have people that would come and not be satisfied with everything that's in it, but there would be good faith, good faith efforts to build this trust in the community between our public safety divisions and our civilians and our constituency. So I laughed with Alderman French yesterday. I asked him, you know, I said, I promise, I, my perfection probably won't be as easy as yours was, but that I was ready, that I was ready to fight for this, the effort and the efforts of the people, again, that have been fighting for twenty-something years and who are encouraging us now today. So with that, I will yield to any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. For discussion, Alderman from the nineteenth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I had a lot of concern about the bill, and I was present for all of the debate and discussion over the last, I want to say eight years or so, that we really got extremely serious about this. And yes, I'm committed to it, but I'm also committed to having something that allows the opportunity for a structure that is not overwhelmed with extremist ideas and ideology and intent of disruption and destruction. I'm also very interested in making sure that all of the law enforcement entities are in their proper place to work together and not try to take each other's responsibilities. I've had some thorough conversations in the last few days with people who I believe they have their concerns, but they know that they can't voice them, and so I do appreciate them speaking with me. And the, and the last one that really took me to a different place this morning and making sure that I kept my promise to myself is listening to our circuit attorney. And she feels comfortable with this at this moment and knows that there are some things that need to be improved upon. But most especially, she feels comfortable with knowing that she's staying in her lane, and those things that are going on with the needing and requesting additional power over discipline of police and other things is not in her lane. I appreciated that, but I'm still going to stay in the position that we need to do some additional work on this, and I'll be present. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-seventh, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I still have some hesitation because I did reach out to, I had spoke to Alderman Bacaro in detail in regards to this because he did reach out to me, and I told him I not only spoke to majors, sergeants, and patrolmen, and the ethical society, and I hadn't got a chance to reach out to St. Louis Association. But I, I'm going to be a president, even though I had my name on there, but I just feel that it's something that we need to take our time with because this is serious to me. And so when I talked to them and, and they were uncomfortable with it, I felt like, you know, and it's not because of who the police are, it's because of us respecting them and their positions and the work that they're doing to make sure we on the legal line to, to be okay with it. So I'm gonna be a president, I'm not going to vote for it because I just think after that meeting, it took us literally three hours to redo that bill. That, that was really, that really sent a message to me that we got a lot of work to do in regards to civilian oversight board, and I agree because I told Alderman Greg Carter, when that civilian oversight board was created, that it was intentionally handcuffed. They intentionally did not want it to have the power that they got. And so I applaud the Black Caucus that kept pushing for it to make sure that, that the civilian oversight board, the work that was done. But I also understand that it's a lot of work that has to be done, and we need to make sure, and we're not gonna get it all right, but we I just think we need to go a little bit further to make sure that we are listening to people that, and their concerns that they have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman twenty-third, I believe you're next.
Just a real quick comment. And in every one of the hearings, I asked over and over reaching out to the association, to the ethical, the only one, the leadership is the only one that wrote. Their silence on this makes me wonder that maybe they don't think it's such a bad thing because, believe me, it seems like every time we do something they don't seem to like, they show up at these hearings, and. They show up at these hearings and I don't understand, I guess, that their silence in all of this. It, it, as far as having plenty of opportunity to make changes, we made a bunch in committee. You know, and again, I, you know, I would have been more than thrilled if they would have reached out, spoke, came to the meeting. I know if we even touch firefighter stuff, they all show up. You know, so I, I just, I just wanted to speak to that. And one of the things that Alderwoman Boyd and myself spoke about was. Uh, their silence on all of this and, uh, really the only ones. Uh, the, the, actually the only one reached out to me was the leadership associations. I, you know, I, I tend to probably stay out of these only because my kids are there, but. I, I'm just perplexed by the silence of those organizations. Then if they thought this was the, just the worst thing that could ever happen, you would have thought. That they would spoke out, wrote a letter, gone to the media, did something. But it's been just quiet. So that's, that's my only comment. I just, their lack of whatever to say, you know, I, I think, I think that, uh. You know, the Alderwoman, uh, you know, Alderwoman Hubbard. Has, has been working on this. This is a bill that's been going on for like, say, eight or nine or ten years. But, uh, again, the, the thing that really just. Makes me wonder is the silence from the association kind of tells me that they're, they must be fine with this. Because they certainly have that spoken out for their members. So I'm confused. Anyway, that, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Alderman from the fourteenth, you are next.
Yes, um, my comment is I have the same concerns, the Alderman from the, Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh and the nineteenth has. Um, we did get some feedback from the Police Officers Association and they were pretty much opposed to this legislation. I have concerns about the additional expenditure and how, uh, this is gonna impact. Um, talking to some of the members of the civilian, current members of the civilian oversight board. I, uh, wonder if this is a wise expenditure and, and inflating this board and making it so much larger. When I, I. I don't think this is a, a direction that we wanna spend, put more money into. Are there, what, what is the, what is the current numbers that we have on complaints right now? I think we need to look at some of the data that we have available and we haven't done that, I don't think. Um, I will, I will be present. Uh, I, I commend the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth on her diligence with this. I think that, you know, this has moved the needle on it. Uh, but I think we haven't, I, I think we need to go a little bit further with this and, and delve a little bit deeper. With the members of law enforcement in the area and the members of the, um. Uh, detention facilities. So that's all I have. Thank you very much. And thank you, uh, Alderman, Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth for all your continued work on this.
All right, thank you, Alderman. And Alderman from the first, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the, members of the board. Um, first time I voted on, uh, civilian review board was in the early nineteen nineties. Um, and I voted yes. Um, then I learned a lot more about it and I voted no. And no, and no, and no, and not because of the reasons that people are saying, because I don't think it's a really independent board. And it did not have a lot of things in it that it needed to be for independent board. Um, I didn't agree with the mayor making the appointments. Um, and we didn't have, uh, some points of subpoena power. So each version of the new civilian review board added some more things and some more things. And the last one, um, that I did finally vote present on was when Alderwoman Boyd from the twenty-seventh sponsored it and put. Subpoena power in that. That was a giant step forward. And even then, I still voted present because. We still need to make this an independent board, um, and the hands are still tied. And nobody really, the reason why the police don't say anything about it, cuz it doesn't threaten them. So they may say a few little things about it, but it doesn't threaten them cuz it's not really independent. Um, and so my vote will continue to be present cuz that's what it's been, but we could write a really good independent. Um, civilian review board. Um, and we do need something because remember this, when we took over the police in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. We don't have a police board. There's no place for any of the people who wanna come and make complaints. To be able to come and make complaints because we don't have a police board anymore. Once we took it over, it kind of became, the police became the mayor's bailiwick. And I think we got rid of a level of, um, accountability that we need to put back, okay? And I would even ask the Public, uh, Safety, uh, uh, Chair. Alderman Bacaro to maybe look at setting up some kind of committee where we would have monthly meetings so that. Cuz, you know, constituents in the city who might wanna come to a meeting and say, hey, these are the problems I had. I've been, I used to go to those police board meetings. So I think that's something that we really took away from the citizens when we, um. Um, when we took over the police. And so we do, if we're not gonna have the civilian review board be a truly independent body. Um, then we really need to look at, um. Us setting up some kind of board within the Public Safety Committee or Senior Alderman where we would have something that the citizens could come. And make complaints about, uh, or compliments or whatever regarding the police. But I am still a present, but I'm probably on the other end, the left end of it, saying that I never found that it was an independent commission. And I've posted on it many times about it in Facebook and everything and told people about why I did not, uh, agree with the way it was run. And I really have not seen anything that they've been able to do. So again, I wanna thank you, Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, for, cuz you continue to work on it. But there are some really truly independent, if we're gonna do it, shake it up and write something that's really truly independent. And then let them say no. Then you'll hear them say no. This, they don't care cuz nothing happens, okay? So, um, I am present and I wanna thank you for working on it cuz it is a hard piece of legislation. Um, because there are certain people who don't want oversight. Um, and we did remove a level of oversight and we need to put it back some kind of way. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the sixteenth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. President, will the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth yield for questions, please?
Alderman twenty-sixth, will you yield the questions from the Alderman from the sixteen?
Absolutely.
All right, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman, can you, can you help me understand the civilian oversight investigator? Role in here and maybe broadly, um, the interplay between the, this established public integrity unit. Under the Circuit Attorney's Office and the interplay with the current. You know, internal affairs, uh, investigation that takes place, uh, within the police department today.
If you can, is there something specifically you're looking at that, you know, we already have investigators already with the current civilian oversight board. The Public Integrity Unit is something that was put in place and might I add, is already funded through Board Bill one. It is something that was worked on, uh, outside, outside, but in conjunction, again, in a good faith effort. For this reform and civilian oversight of the city.
You know, yeah, you're right. Sorry. Specifically, I don't know how the interplay is going to work between the, the police department that has, uh, IED. An Internal Affairs Department and, um, if there's an officer involved, um, shooting or an officer involved event. That needs to be investigated. Does, does, does that department? Where, is there a work together between the current Internal Affairs Police Department and the Public Integrity Unit? I don't.
Not now because it's not in place yet, remember? For another year. And there was, and so in the previous meeting when I spoke of MOU and I might have misused.
Right.
But that, that is the agreement and I think the work and the language that you're speaking about, that is not in this bill. And, um, there were groups and entities that tried to get it in, that tried to work to get it in this bill, but it, it just, um, um. It didn't make, the language did not make it in this bill. And I know there's some, most of the pushback, I'm just, we can be frank and honest on here and transparent. Most of the pushback is because of that. But again, I wanna be clear, um, and, and make sure we control that narrative that. Well, I know when I'm down here, right, I never make legislation personal with any, myself, with any of us, with anybody that's in any position. I don't think Mama Jamala and them in two thousand fifteen knew that we would be right here, or we would be in position arguing or debating this today. So I think that we have to look bigger, broader around who's, if it's personal or if it's, uh, a concern with the individual. That you have to look at the greater good of legislation and a greater good of how it's going to serve our constituents here in the City of St. Louis. That, so the reality is what you're looking for is not in the bill. And I don't know it personally. And, uh, what we are, I guess, continuing to fall back on is the good faith effort. That this shows that we are going to work collectively, continue the work. This is not new work, right? Continue the work collectively, um, to support our civilians. Let's not forget that. If, if we get here through uncivil treatment, right? So nobody wakes up and is gonna be in front of a civilian oversight board. You get here through uncivil treatment. So we can start there. And, and if it's a problem and it works both ways. If it's a problem which you're investigating uncivil treatment, something else needs to be looked at. Because honestly, if you did, if there, if, it protects you. And that's what I've heard from the.
Not, not necessarily, right? I mean, we, we're investigating the allegation of uncivil treatment. I think that's an important di- di- distinction to, to make, right? Uh, an allegation can be brought to a citizen oversight committee, um, and it needs to be investigated by professionals who know the construct. And, and, and understand how to do that. So just the, the mere allegation of, of civil entreatment doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean that. There's something inherently broken or wrong. Allegations fly around all the time, uh, to citizens and to police. So I think.
That was my point.
Okay, okay. Um, okay. So the, 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 the bill is, is absent of, of what would be kind of a memorandum of understanding. Of just how, how the public integrity unit and police. Would, would need to work together, right? Cuz, cuz, uh, let me walk through maybe an example. Um, there's an officer-involved, uh, shooting. Um, and it's, that's a scene, right? That's an investigative scene. So the Circuit Attorney's Office and maybe, uh, that office's investigators are on the scene. But there's also police department personnel that would be on that scene controlling the scene. So there, there will need to be some, some level of, of cooperation and understanding of. That, that, where there's a protocol that, that happens there. Um, I. Is it possible, and I'm gonna ask the question without that existing, cuz I think that's very important to, to police. I think that's very important. Um, you know, it should be important to this body before we vote on this. Is it possible you consider, you know, putting this on the informal calendar through the, through the summer sessions, in the summer break? And allowing for at least, um, um, language or at least a form document of a memorandum of understanding. To, to circulate to, to the members of this, uh, of this board and, and for the, the stakeholders and parties involved to see.
Thank you for that and I respect that. And honestly, that's a question and a, and a push, uh, that some of us really did try to do. And, and without, um, being, uh. I guess there is a level of too much transparency when you're trying to work collectively, when you're bringing people together to work collectively, that you just can't say everything. And so what I'm saying, well, first is no, we don't wanna put this on the informal calendar because that was my hard no that that wouldn't be done. But what you can be sure of is that, um, and this is not a scapegoat or anything on that, but this doesn't go into play today. This doesn't go into play Friday. We have a year to get this right. And who knows how we watched the board play out in the last, what, thirty days? Who knows who's gonna be in place? In the, in the, in a year's time. What we do know is our civilians will be in place, our constituents will be in place. And they deserve this trust-building document, this trust-building policy, um, to continue to move our communities forward. As it relates to public sta- public safety. So, um, I, I, I hope that, I hope those entities, I hope those parties are listening today. And they hear your concerns. So it's more than just, um, some of the other people and myself, um, speaking on behalf of it. But as I now know, because I know that that's not gonna make a difference in whether this, um, and whether we're able to move this deal forward this session or not.
I appreciate that, Alderwoman, I do. And I do wanna commend you on, on your hard work and, and, um. The, the time you did take to, to, to talk to as many parties as possible and, 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 you know, in, in the work on this bill. So I appreciate that. Uh, I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the first for the second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. If the Alderman from the sixteenth would yield.
Alderman from the sixteenth, will you yield the questions from the Alderman from the first?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, um, you asked for some kind of form document and maybe I misunderstood. Could you explain that again for me, please?
Yeah, I mean, I think the understanding is in this board bill, there's, there's gonna need to be some, some protocol or a memorandum of understanding. Between, uh, the police department, um, and the public integrity unit as well as the citizen oversight. On, um, how they'll work together in a, in any kind of a investigation. And that's what ceases to exist in, in this. So I was, I was hoping for a construct at least to say, um, again, just using a real world, world example. If, you know, the corner of Maine and Maine, there's an incident and it involves an officer and it was an internal investigation or an investigation by the public integrity unit. Um, uh, who dictates, right? In terms of questioning people, in terms of investigating. There's going to need to be obviously help and, and, uh, some work together cooperation, um, in an incident like that. I, I don't envision, I don't envision the public integrity unit, Alderwoman showing up and flashing their public integrity badges. And then all the police just sort of move away cuz they're gonna need to be there to control the scene, um, in any situation. So that's what's absent of here. I just, I don't understand how that's going to work.
So I guess my question, I heard you say something about you have to have professional people that, um, investigate. So would you envision the public integrity unit as, which would be over, uh, would have an overview with the, uh, uh, Circuit Attorney? Would you per- uh, perceive them to be, uh, professional people? Uh, how, how do you perceive that? And what is your thought about?
I can't speak to that. I don't know their credentials. I don't know what type of training they have. Um, I do know, uh, the, the training that's required. And the tests that need to be passed, uh, to move up to the level of, uh, detective in the department. I know there's, there's, right, there's sort of certification processes associated with that. I, I can't even begin to speak. I, I'm sure there's, there's a, there's a professional certification associated with that, Alderwoman. I just, I don't know it, so.
Okay, um, and we already know if the Circuit Attorney wants to investigate somebody, she has that power to right now. Without, um, just like we do, the Board of Aldermen, actually, we have a lot more power a lot of times than we use. We can subpoena people. We can investigate and we don't have to have any more things than to have gotten, uh, elected, okay? And then make it up to a chair's position. So, um, but the Circuit Attorney has training as an attorney. And, um, even when you hire people as investigators, I've always thought that was a really unfair thing that she didn't hot. That, that happened with her and the, uh, Harvard investigator. Because you can hire really good people that do really bad stupid things. So, um, that doesn't mean they didn't have the qualifications. That just means they didn't do the right thing. We've been reeling on our own Board of Aldermen for the last couple of months, okay? All right, so that's just what, as I said before, um, I, so my position has always been. Since I became a attorney at the Public Defenders in the eighties, is that it was a conflict of interest for the police to have to. Um, investigate the Circuit Attorney's, uh, cases. And then when there was a problem with the police. That the Circuit Attorney then had to investigate the police. So this does, this predates, uh, all these people here. And it goes back to George Peach when I first learned that. I didn't understand it until I became a public defender. And who, who taught me again was the police cuz they got mad at the poli- the, uh, uh, Circuit Attorney who was the most kind to the police. George Peach. And because he dared to investigate one of them, they dared to have the blue flute. And that made me understand how much of a conflict that was. And as the public defender, we had a conflicts office. And I really do think we need to at some point set up something entirely different. If the police are gonna investigate for the Circuit Attorney. There needs to be something separate that investigate the police. That is too much of a conflict of interest. Um, and it's not, it wasn't done by this Circuit Attorney or the one before, the one before. It's always been a conflict. Um, and that gave the police too much power to me over the Circuit Attorneys. Because if they get mad. Because if they get mad, they can just mess up your cases, not investigate them correctly. And then make it look like it's something that the circuit attorney was doing. And so um I hope that at some point we have a truthful conversation about separating these things out. But uh the circuit attorney um being able to investigate, she can certainly do it anytime she wants to. And I think a lot of this is personal versus uh what is the best interest of how we should run our city. I have no further comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you, all the woman. Uh Alderman twenty eighth, your hand was up. I, then you took it down. Are you? Alderman from twenty eighth?
Yeah, I withdrawed.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, hearing no further discussion, seeing no hands up. Alderman twenty sixth, you're welcome to close on your board bill.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I I wanna correct you really quick right there, because this definitely is not my board bill. So many who work into this, though I wouldn't begin to stand and say this might well sit here and say this is my board bill. But I just wanna thank everyone. I I wanna thank everyone that's listening and has been engaged in this entire process. Um one of the things that was said um back, and I I have to quote her, she said um that our collective experiences and skills make us stronger. That was Mama Jamala back in her comments, one of her um her testimonies back in two thousand fifteen. I think that all of our collective lived experiences bring us, have brought us to where we are today, and we're not done. Because the things that Alderman Tyus said, I heard her say on the meetings and the hearings back then. And and none of this work is gonna stop, um and we don't want it to stop. So um this for me builds up the the morale that I know that we've all spoken and we are fighting and we've talked about um wanting to try to build not just within our own entity, but in the police department and our intention of um like e- everything that we have going on in the city. I think that trust is built through morale is built through trust, morale is built through respect, open communication and um working together. So again, I thank you all. And with that, I renew my motion um to move board bill forty seven.
Roll call, roll call request.
All right, thank you, all the woman. There's been a request for roll call. Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans. Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Calder. Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Present.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
No.
Alderman Pe- excuse me, Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Bacaro.
I'm abstaining.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
No.
Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder. Alderman Spencer. Fourteen eye votes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'd like to change my vote to a no. Alderman Howard.
Fourteen eye votes. Three. No votes. And four voted present.
All right. By your vote, we have perfected board bill forty seven, CSAA. We will now move to third reading consent calendar.
Board Bill fifty eight as amended. Fifty and fifty nine as amended.
All right, Alderman from the twenty fifth, you're recognized on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Hey, Mr. President, thank you. I move that we uh adopt the third reading consent calendar.
All right, so moved by Alderman to twenty fifth, second by Alderman from the ninth. I recognize his broken microphone anywhere. So uh Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder. Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Yes.
Alderman Peel. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Bacaro.
Still trying to look at it, I'm sorry. Um. I'll I'll vote aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Calder. Alderman Odenberg.
Aye. Aye.
Alderman Todd. Alderman Spencer. Twenty one eye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the twenty fifth and third read and finally pass your aforementioned board bills. Will now move to line item eighteen, third reading and final passage.
Board Bill sixty one committee subs sponsored by Alderman Rice and the following all the persons. Peel, Clark Hubbard, Ingracia, Calder, Green, Switzer, Gunther, Todd, Cone, Grass, Stevens, Middlebrook and Orion. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Apportement Authorizing, I'm sorry, Appropriating A Portion of Funds Received Under the Missouri Rescue Plan Act twenty twenty one, March fourth, twenty twenty one. To the St. Louis Department of Health authorizing contracts to expand the funds to the extent received contain the severability clause and emergency clause.
Alderman eighth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um would you please move board bill sixty one to the third reading informal calendar um to get through?
All right, Sharita, please make note of that.
Thank you.
So noted.
All right.
Board Bill sixty three as amended. Sponsored by Alderman Bosley. An ordinance to repeal ordinance six eight seven zero six relating to the appointment and rates compensation of certain employees under the license collector of the city of St. Louis enacting a new there of a new ordinance dealing with the same subject matter and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the third, you're recognized on the third reading final passage for bill sixty three as amended.
All right, thank you, sir. I move that we third read and finally pass board bill sixty three as amended.
Well, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman the third, second by Alderman twenty third. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm only on my first cup of coffee. Thank you. Had an early day today. All right, Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder. Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Calder. Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Twenty one eye votes.
Madam Clerk, can you change my vote to abstain? My mother works for that office.
Twenty eye votes and one abstain.
All right, by your vote, you have third read and finally passed board bill uh pardon me, sixty three as amended. Board Bill sixty five, uh we have.
Board Bill sixty five floor sub sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderman Gunther. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Apportement appropriate appropriating a portion of funds received under the American Plan American Rescue Plan Act twenty twenty one authorizing contracts to expand the funds to the extent received contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause.
All right, Alderman from the third, you're recognized.
Hey, Mr. President, I'd like to send board bill sixty five uh floor substitute back to uh the third reading informal please, so I can get through any P and A.
All right, uh Sharita, please make note of that.
So noted.
Okay. All the business being suspended, the president will open session to fix a signature here, too. The end of these may become law. Give me one second, guys. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, President, that was for board bills fifty eight as amended. Fifty nine as amended. Sixty three as amended.
Correct. Thank you. All right, so courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderman twenty fifth, you're recognized on a courtesy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt the courtesy resolutions calendar.
All right. Didn't catch the second. There was a multitude of them.
First word.
All right. They move by Alderman twenty fifth, second by Alderman from the first word. Then we adopt a courtesy resolutions calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, pick a word of your choice. All right, ayes have it. All right, first reading of resolutions.
Resolution sixty two sponsored by President Ballmer, Alderman Davis, Alderman Bacaro and Alderman Clark Hubbard, hiring of Board of Aldermen staff.
Alderman nineteen, you're recognized on the first reading of resolution number sixty two.
Uh thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Resolution number fifty two. Sorry. I would like to ask for unanimous consent first, sir. Thank you.
Second.
Hearing no objection, we will proceed. Thank you. Let me interrupt you like that. I'm sorry.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Could we ask um to have the resolution only only the preamble read of it? I don't need the whole resolution read, just the beginning.
Sharita, could you accommodate us?
Yes, sir. Give me just a second.
All right, thank you very much.
Resolution sixty two hiring of Board of Aldermen staff. Whereas the city of St. Louis Board of Aldermen annually adopts its rules of the Board of Aldermen. Whereas rule thirty, I'm sorry, eighty three outlines the hiring procedures for employees of the Board of Aldermen. And whereas the Board of Aldermen has several positions that need to be filled in a timely manner to ensure a well-functioning board with the appropriate support staff required. Whereas the clerk of the Board of Aldermen will be posting the following open positions on the city's hiring website to be filled at the Board of Aldermen. Associate clerks, recorder, archivist, executive secretary, financial analyst, administrative secretary to the clerk, administrative aide, IT specialist. And whereas on July fifteenth, the Board of Aldermen will begin a summer recess and return on September sixteenth, twenty twenty two. Now, therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we authorize the clerk of the Board of Aldermen to begin the hiring process, interview candidates, hire and begin training the staff for the positions of associate clerks and administrative secretary to the clerk during the summer recess. We therefore direct the clerk of the board to spread a copy of the resolution across the minute of these proceedings and to prepare a copy to the end that it may be presented to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this thirteenth day of July, twenty twenty two. The Honorable Joseph Ballmer, President Board of Aldermen, the Honorable Marlene Davis, nineteenth ward Aldermen, the Honorable Sh- Shemene Clark Hubbard, twenty six Ald- Alderman and the Honorable Joseph Acquaro, twenty third Aldermen.
All right, uh we have receiving now since it's been read, we, you'd like to make a motion to adopt and we'll get a second and we can go to discussion, all of them.
I thank you very much. I asked uh for adoption of this resolution and uh have favorable support.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman nineteenth. I didn't catch the second. There's the second by Alderman first, sorry. All right. My my glasses are foggy. I'm sorry. My my glasses are foggy. I'm sorry. Okay, please proceed, Alvin from the nineteenth.
Uh thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh as those of you who serve on the Personnel Committee, uh this resolution encompasses work that you've been working on for well over a year and trying to uh provide this Board of Aldum Aldermen with the appropriate staffing that should have been there years ago. As we look at this, we do know that the coming years with the restructuring of the board and how it's going to be operating with fewer Alderpersons, it will require additional staff to have support there. The two positions that are being asked for so that these people can get hired and trained over the summer break, they will be prepared to pick up some of this additional uh work that has been on our current staff. They've all been so supportive. They've not complained. They've worked on Saturdays, Sundays, whatever was required of them, and we do appreciate it. So uh it would help us, it would definitely help the staff so that these persons could be hired and trained and be prepared to support our board when we come back. Um and now I'm open for questions.
All right, Alvin from the first, you're recognized.
Um thank you, Mr. President. President and members of the board, please add my my name as a co-sponsor, and that's my question.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Alvin from the fourth, you're recognized.
Yes, that is also my question, and that is to have my name also added.
All right, Sharita, please make note of those. Okay, Alvin from the fourteenth, you were recognized.
I would like to um make a motion that we make this resolution in bank.
Okay, it's moving second that we in bank, resolution number sixty two. Uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Alvin twenty fifth, you still have your hand up. Is there any discussion?
I do, yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. I I may I ask or inquire of the Alderwoman from the nineteenth?
Alvin the nineteenth, will you yield the questions from the alderman for the twenty fifth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Alderwoman. Um I'm just, I want to be clear. So this is authorizing the clerk to uh initiate the hiring process. Uh will the candidates eventually come back to the Personnel Committee for review prior to hiring? Um as is our standard practice, uh because I I noticed you mentioned in the description of the resolution that it authorizes him to hire and train. So I just want to make sure that we still have that additional step where at least the Personnel Committee will be responsible for reviewing and uh the offers that are being made for the candidates.
Um the answer for that is no, not on these two positions. Uh I don't know if you pay, if you remember, we did try to hire these two positions before. And so the Personnel Committee, I believe, is very comfortable with our board clerk in knowing and understanding what we're looking for. Uh I'm not on the Personnel Committee uh now, but was s- serving on it when all of this started with conversation. And so these two positions are really uh kind of an emergency. We got to get them in there. There's a lot of work that needs to uh be caught up on while we're on break. A lot of things put in place for us to come back in session. And they're just overwhelmed and uh we would like to give that privilege to the board clerk to move forward with those two positions.
Okay, so I just, I want to make sure that folks are clear. It's a little bit of a departure of how we typically handle it because we would normally have those hires come before Personnel and then the full Board of Aldermen um to, you know, discuss the candidates and make those hires. So it does depart slightly from our normal process uh with respect to that. But uh you know, to your point, they are very much needed roles and we need to um certainly initiate this process as we head into uh the reduction of the Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
Thank you, Alvin. Thank you, Alvin. Alvin, the first, you're recognized for the second time.
Okay, thank you. Um so um if Alderwoman from the nineteenth would yield.
Alvin the nineteenth will yield to questions from the Alderwoman from the first. Alvin the nineteenth, will you yield?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Um and it's just those two positions, those other positions, we still will be going through the 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 regular uh for the secretaries and things. I want people to understand that. It's just those two positions. Right?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks both of you. Yes, this, we are in a time sensitive situation here. And we are needing to uh get the extra water out of the boat and keep the boat from sinking. We need to get some extra oars in the water. All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alvin the nineteenth, you're recognized to close.
I renew my motion. Thank you.
All right, it has been moved by the alderman from the nineteenth and seconded by Alvin the first that we adopt resolution sixty two. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. By your vote, you approve the motion of the alderman from the nineteenth, and we have adopted resolution number sixty two. Second reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Uh Thursday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Public Safety will have a meeting at ten AM. Parks will have a meeting at one PM. Both are via webinar. Friday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty two. Full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That's the extent of the announcements.
All right, any hands up? Any hands up? No further announcements, so I would like to make one myself. If I seem a little slap happy, today is my mother-in-law's ninety-fifth birthday. And we had to wake up for a six-thirty mass and breakfast. Which uh is not my time of day for those who've known me for quite some time. So, happy birthday, Dorothy Bartoni. God bless you. All right. Anyone else? No further announcements?
Congratulations to your mom's ninety-fifth. That's dope.
Thank you. My mother-in-law.
Mother-in-law. Mother-in-law. That's amazing, though.
Yes, thank you very much.
I I I wasn't gonna raise my hand because, you know, I'm following the announcements about the announcements instructions, but I think we should congratulate our newly elected board member from the eleventh ward.
Well, we was, we were gonna do that Friday when it gets
Oh, okay, okay. We'll do it Friday.
Let's not put the cart before the horse, as they say.
You got away to some war.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman. Alvin from the twelve, you're recognized.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question about Friday, but I realized it could be an email and not a meeting, so I uh I yield back. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. No further hands up. Alderman from the twenty fifth, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we excuse the alderman from the seventh ward for very necessary absence.
Yes, he was going to the hospital last night, last I heard, with his wife. Hopefully things have worked out. All right, okay, it's been moved. Any seconds? Applause is a second. All right, it's been moved by Alvin twenty fifth, second by Alvin the eighth, that we excuse Alvin from the seventh. All in favor, say
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Opposed? No.
All right, the ayes have it. Alvin from the twenty fifth, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adjourn until Friday, July fifteenth at ten AM via webinar.
All right, it's been moved by Alvin from the twenty fifth. I entertain a second.
Second.
It's been moved by Alvin twenty fifth, second by Alvin the eighth, that we will adjourn to July fifteenth, ten AM, twenty twenty two. Via webinar, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Like Simon says today. All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll see you Friday.